I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kasemus.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, public comments, three minutes each. When I call your name, please come up to the podium with your name and your address for the record. Please keep your comments civil. First, we have Mr. Bruce Malyon.
Good evening. I have three topics for you this evening. Unfortunately, I was told over the weekend that a person who had worked with us, meaning the union and the board and probably the administrators' union, passed away. That's J. Larry Foye, passed away this weekend. He had really done a lot of great work in Norwalk as a lawyer, as a mediator, as an arbitrator. I just wanted to make you aware of that. He's a really well-respected gentleman. Second, I had the pleasure last week of going to JM Wright Tech for the ribbon cutting for that brand-new $90 million building, and it is nothing short of spectacular. And if you get a chance to go, please do. There is 10 different labs. They're all brand-new. They are just fabulous. There's 146 students there. They're Norwalk and Stanford students. They're ninth graders, and they will circulate through the 10 different labs, starting with two days in each lab for orientation. They'll pare it down to three or four labs for a week or two, and then they will finally make a choice. And when they come out, no matter what trade they choose, culinary, building maintenance, carpentry, electrical plumbing, they have every single piece of equipment is brand-new, state-of-the-art, cutting-edge, beyond comprehension. And I just hope you get a chance to go there and see that. I also had the pleasure in the afternoon last week with Manny of meeting with the P-Tech students at Norwalk High School, almost 100 of them, with the commissioner, and also Dave Levinson from Norwalk Community College. And that looks like that's off to a great start, and hopefully that'll work well. So lots of good things, lots of good news, all headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Stanley Schuler.
Stanley Schuler, president of Local 1042. I reside in Stafford, Connecticut, '97. I just want to come back and rebuttal something that Mr. Rich Rudo was talking about when you guys voted on privatizing last week. He referred to Stanford, that they're doing the same thing in Stanford. It's totally different. I checked with the guys in Stanford, also gave everybody a packet. I know a few of the people on the custodian board for Stanford. What the board is trying to do here is privatize, for the record, because they want to keep the old guys and not post new jobs, so therefore, at period of time, all the old guys will be going away. What Stanford has, Stanford has new people for new buildings that they allow to come privatize, or they can keep the same people that they have. Then the other thing, they have part-time people, but they don't supersede the people who are already building. They have, they're responsible for their own overtime that they do, and with Stanford, at a period of time, their people will still be there. What Norwalkers want to do is, like I said, a period of time, they will be dismissed. Stanford keeps their employees there, you know, even though they have some part-time people there, but they're, they don't have control over the overtime there or closing the building. They still have custodians come on the weekend and do the overtime. That's what they're doing in Stanford. So that's totally different. And also, the thing about outsourcing our grass, we never agreed to that. That's something that the management took upon itself to do that. And if you look at our preamble that we have in our contract, you still have to come with us, and we have to be in agreement with that, or either changing the areas that the custodians have. So now that you're not hiring anybody, you're not hiring the floaters, you're not hiring part-time people, and then they did a lot of transfers, so who's taking care of the part-time area? Are you going to do it far as have a part-time person do it, which you can't, because you had to freeze? You can't have a floater do it, because there's no floater, so you have to do an overtime. Some of the guys is calling me and complaining that management can't, and they'll say they have to exorbe the area. We do have square footage of stuff that we do. It doesn't, this work like that. You really have to, management really have to sit down and talk to us about how they plan on doing things. That's what Stanford did. They sat down and came to an agreement on how they, how they will handle things. And the other issues that we have is, when it comes down to overtime or cleaning the building, I tried to reach out and work with management. A couple of schools wouldn't have been in overtime, wouldn't have been done on time, not unless I stepped in and allowed people who was floaters or either part-time people or security to do the building, because there was supposed to be full-time people. Because of the lack of communication, I had to make a decision to allow my, these people to do overtime. If I didn't, the schools wouldn't have been open on time. And also about supplies and stuff, how are we going to do our job if we don't get supplies? It's going on the second week of school next week. We still don't have like dust mops or something like that, but we have enough money to outsource our work. We want to save $90,000, but we have $2.9 million in the hole, I mean, and, you know, that we can use. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Jackie Austin.
That's not for me, right?
No, it's not. I'm just, I'm just setting it.
Last time I was here, you cut me off, but not today.
No, I didn't cut you off again.
I'm sure you do that a lot, though. Tonight, Jackie Austin, sorry, Jackie Austin, 34 Melrose Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're starting now.
Tonight, I'm here as a parent of a child in the, in the Norwalk Public School Systems who receives special education services. And back at the end of June, I had read in Nancy on Norwalk, actually, that Dr. Rivera, you had been quoted as speaking about the future of special ed services in particular. Part of it was about the restructuring of the roles, the administrative roles, but you also spoke about the interest in looking into bringing back some services in-house, as opposed to busing children out to have services provided to them. And part of that also had to do with the extended school year program as well. And I have, I know that the summer is a quiet time, but we are talking about budget surplus usage, and we have been talking also about privatization versus keeping things in-house. And I wanted to kind of bring that back to the forefront, see if you guys have made any steps towards at least looking into this, because there are a lot of districts that are doing so. And I think there's a lot of benefits, not only cost, but also to the town as far as town pride, quality of education, quality of life for the children and the families who do receive those services. So I'd like to have that brought back into the circle if it has not been, and if it has been, I'd like to know where we stand with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all that signed up.
Jackie, just real quick, in tonight's proposal for the expenditure on the surplus is a proposal to spend $500,000 to $800,000 to fund implementation of the special education in-house program. So, yeah, this is actually on the last page of the memo, so that is, in fact, in the works. All right.
Is there participation in how that program is developed or how we go out?
Oh, yeah. I mean, at this point, it's very preliminary. We want, we want to see if the city is agreeable to setting aside that money, and then we have to put together the program.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next is superintendent's report.
Vice President, if I can give you a chance to sign that.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe my president covered most of it.
I need your name and address.
My name is Charlie Wyatt. I was resident at 231 Lincoln Avenue.
Is that Norwalk?
That is in Bridgeport, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Vice President of Local 1042. I believe he covered most of the stuff that I was talking about. However, in the beginning of our contract, it talks about how the board recognizes the union as the exclusive bargaining agent and representative of the custodial maintenance and security staff for the purpose of collective bargaining with respect to wages, hours, and other conditions of employment and standards of productivity and performance. The board and the union hereby agree that the welfare of the children of Norwalk is paramount to the operations of the schools and hereby diligently promoted by both parties, and that the good morale of the school staff is necessary to the greatest welfare of the children. After reading that, we simply haven't followed that. This board seems to have no concern for what we've brought before the board, all of the paperwork, all of the packets. We seem to have half of the board that agree, and the other half of the board that were pretty much hell-bent on doing this from day one. And we're in the process of filing an MPP against the board for all of the violations previously mentioned. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Rivera, superintendent's report.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to schedule some follow-up discussions with the first two speakers who spoke tonight. I think there's some information that would be helpful for us to clarify, both from the administrative side as well as some of the points that were raised, and we're happy to follow up on the special ed discussion as well. As you know, last week was a big week. It was the start of school for, for our, for our students. It began on Monday with, with our convocation, and I was really pleased. Jeffrey Canada came to us from Harlem, New York, and spoke to the entire faculty, and he was really quite inspirational. I've, I've heard nothing but rave reviews about, about his comments, and I just want to give a special thanks to that. In addition to Jeff Canada, who opened up our convocation for all of our staff, Eric Jensen, another nationally, internationally known consultant, was in town. He is the individual who's been working with our staff from Kendall and, as well as with Tracy. And there are a number of schools that were represented at the training that we held that Monday, and every staff member that I've run into are really encouraged. It's, it's very hands-on, practical skills and knowledge that teachers should have on how to better engage students as we work to try to change the culture here in our classrooms as well as in the district. And so we're going to continue with, with that support and the kind of training that we're encouraging. Obviously, on Tuesday, we journeyed training. On Wednesday, school began. Regarding our facilities, just going to highlight a few of the opening of school observations. Our facilities look great, and I really, I do have to thank our custodians. I think they did a wonderful job. The many schools that I visited, the, the classrooms are ready. They looked great. I will also say that the grounds, the lawn maintenance and the grounds were also incredibly well-maintained and trimmed. And what you don't know, because it was not in my resume, but I was the head of the grass-cutting crew for the City of New London for two summers in a row. So I did have a crew of four or five people and developed a lot of experience, so I pay attention to things like trim and looking at well-groomed structure. Anyway, now, Power School implementation, however, was good, but we had some glitches. As you know, we made a major transition from our Genesis system to Power School. Typically, the system gets shut down for, for a couple of weeks. As a result of that, there were some delays that were created, our delays in our ability to get updated information on the number of students that had, that had actually registered. And that compounded with the fact that we had a significant increase in students, which I'll talk about in a minute, created the need for us to make some, some staffing adjustments. They were not as timely as we would have liked. I think with our Power School system being in place, we are going to be going through a major debriefing and make sure that we are taking steps down the road to complete staffing as early as we possibly can, in the ideal world, before the end of the school year, and then, and then make adjustments as we need to based on some of the fluctuations. But this was almost like a, I don't like to use the term perfect storm, because it was actually a good thing with our enrollment shooting up, but with enrollment increasing as well as with some of the Power School glitches, we had some, some snags with, with that. Staffing, at the time that that was going on, we actually hired 58 new staff members. I think that's even greater than the number that we hired a year ago. We hired 23 new middle and high school teachers at the elementary school level. We had 29 new elementary certified staff, and it's basically, essentially, a total of about 28. Now, I talked a little bit about enrollment. We are about 138 more students, 140 students approximately, more than we had projected. That's a fairly significant number. We exhausted during the staffing process the four teachers that we needed and needed two more. In addition to that, as you know, with the, the opening of our Norwalk Early College Academy in the startup year, we weren't able to accommodate staffing with the existing staff at Norwalk High, and so we had to add teachers, and that was shared, obviously, at the finance committee, and it's actually in the recommendation that we're making to you with regard to surplus funding. So staffing is actually, right now, at this point in time, it's 11,350 students. Now, we're projecting that that could well be an actual of somewhat less, because we still have to go through the process of eliminating students who don't show, who for whatever reason do not return to our system. So I know it's, it's early. It's September 2nd. Usually, by October 1, and that first meeting in October, we'll have much more precise data about our staffing, about our enrollment, and we can tell you at the same point in time what our enrollment was from one year to the current year. The number of English language learners is, is really going up. Obviously, our ELL office, our Welcome Center, tested 140 pre-K children since February. Since August 18th, mind, mid-August, we've tested 66 more students, of which 43 students have come to us as unaccompanied minors, a number of them from Texas and elsewhere. And interestingly enough, especially at the secondary level, there are at least 28 children who've missed one and even more than one years of schooling. So we have a challenge, not only to make certain that they're getting the proper instruction in terms of English language development, but also academic, meeting their academic needs as well. So we may, we may have to make some adjustments. We're, we're going to be having a meeting on that to look at what kinds of programs, what kinds of enhanced services we can put in place for some of the increased number of English language learners who are entering our system at all levels, K through 12.
Can I just ask you maybe?
Sure.
By unaccompanied minors, do you mean they had no legal guardian or legal parent? I mean, they were under 18 and adult?
Yes. Tony, do you have specifics on that?
Yes, well, they're unaccompanied minors, but they do have relatives that live in Norwalk. They're staying with, both relatives.
Okay. Mr. Tronti.
But they're not legal guardians necessarily.
I believe there's, there's, this is impacting cities across the country, and we are one of many.
These are the kids that are coming in across the border?
Yes, yes.
And the government's not giving us any dollar for that, are they? They're going to put that tax burden on us, is what they're doing.
It's our responsibility to educate them as we enroll them in our school.
That's great.
That is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar is item 52A, approval of personnel. 52B, approval of budget transfers. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Ms. Keys moves. Is there a second? Mr. Barbus? Any discussion?
Something from consent?
What would you like to remove?
The budget transfers.
Both budget transfers?
Uh...
One is for the marching band, the other is for Relia Transportation.
Oh, is that from Hall? Is this from, uh... Well, that's not the, okay. Yes.
So which one would you, you want both or just one of them?
No, no.
You don't need to remove them?
I know you can't. He's asking, do you want to do one or two?
These are the two.
So which one? Which one? This one?
No, which is this?
Okay. This is 2A. He has to do 35,000 in equipment. He's asking the 20,000. Okay? That's more on file.
You're okay?
Yes.
Okay. Then the items will remain on the consent calendar. Any other discussion? If there are none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please indicate. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next item is item three, approval of expenditure plan for unexpended education funds account. Just so we follow the procedure, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the proposed expenditure plan. Mr. Kasemus moves. Ms. Rivas seconds. Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Do you and Rich want to take us through this?
Sure, Rich, come on up. I would just like to make a few points from the email, the memo that, that I distributed on Friday accompanying Rich's analysis. We looked at all of the various suggestions that, that individuals had made, individual board members, and we knew that as we were looking at them, that we had actually had some funding to address some of these items, and thought it would be helpful for us to identify that and to make that known. However, what, as we looked at this surplus, we, we tried to adhere to the three basic tenets, if you will. One, we tried and wanted to avoid putting funding into any recurring cost to the extent that we could, meaning obviously, the easy one is staffing. We needed staffing. We've had, we have an enrollment increase. We really had no choice with regard to that and the impact of our enrollment increase. The rest, we looked at how we could support what was in our strategic plan, the priorities that we as a board had adopted, those critical areas that we wanted to address, our efforts to improve our district culture, our school culture, our classroom culture, professional learning for teachers and student engagement, and decided that that would be a more appropriate directive to place, a more appropriate priority, if you will, in terms of the use of this, of this funding. And then, of course, there was a third area, which was to the extent that we can improve certain physical structures, i.e. the special education pre-K center that we hope to move into in a year. That became another major, another major priority. And, and it basically, as we reviewed all of these and we came together, there are two major changes that unfolded in the last week. One, in the initial, in the last presentation that was made to the finance committee, we had recommended $225,000 for renovations to areas in central office, obviously to create some more spaces that would be more appropriate for the kind of level of confidentiality that we need to maintain. We had a lot of discussion, met with a number of my staff. They then took it, and we said, "Look, you know, if there are any other ways that we can do this, accompany this, accommodate this, I should say, and make some of these physical changes by reassigning, reallocating staff from their current offices and just changing configurations in terms of how we're, how we're organized, that we would, that we would want to try to do it in that way." And they did come back with, with a, with a very good set of recommendations that we believe are workable, that will allow us to make some of these changes. There will be some, some minor adjustments we'll, we'll need to make, but it's not going to be in sync with the quite excessive, I thought, preliminary estimate of 225,000. At the same time that that was happening, last Wednesday, actually, that wasn't last Wednesday, it was, it was the week before, when we were with all of our administrators, this was the, the day after our last board meeting, we had a major discussion about standards, standards as it applies to schools, expectations for principals, expectations for our staff, and we spent a good deal of time talking about what it would mean to meet these expectations around culture change, around student engagement. And we actually asked the staff to participate in an exercise. We actually asked them, "How can we at Central Office help you? What can we do?" And there are about, I don't know, 50 to 60 administrators. They were organized in tables. Some of them were school-centric, if you will. They, they sat with their, their teams, and we listened very carefully and took notes, and it was very clear. They actually, they all participated. They shared, they talked about wanting more professional learning in the area of student engagement. They, they identified some other needs, and they were all in keeping with that thrust. And I, and I, and I remember saying, "We will find a way to support your efforts to, to provide more support to you in your buildings." So it made sense. It made sense that as we were freeing up this expense, that we could use that expense to the extent that we could to provide funding to the schools for school-determined priorities. Might be, one school might want to have, use Reading 180 for intervention for their kids. Another school may actually zero in on the professional learning around student engagement, but we would give them that option in sync with the priorities that we had set around changing school culture, around improving the quality of interaction with our teachers and our students, et cetera. And so that's a, that's a big change, and that is what we, that's what I'm proposing that we do with that. There were some other adjustments that we had to make. There were some actuals that came in in terms of salaries for teachers and a few others, which is why we, we had to tweak it, and it wasn't a simple 225,000 for 225,000, so we made some other adjustments. But that's how we approach this, and then, obviously, you know, knowing that, yes, to the extent that we can advance more technology for our schools, be it projectors, to the extent that we can advance, we have $2.5 million of capital improvements in the area of school safety, and we're actually already getting ready to submit bids to put in new intercom systems in schools, closed-circuit television in schools, locks. We're even looking at doing much more in the area of security around windows, beyond just the entryway. There's a lot of, of planned work in that area. We're also going to have a major facility utilization study, where we're going to be taking into account some of the other kinds of physical structures and, and changes that we're going to need as a system. Lockers, you know, it's, it's, you know, when, when families use our, our lockers at, at Norwalk High School during the summer, and they go in and they bring their children to participate in some of the summer programs or after-school programs, there's nothing worse than to go in there and see broken lockers in locker rooms that need further, further attention. And so that is also something that we and Rich and I had talked about months ago, and we've asked him to set aside funding so we can replace all those damaged lockers, but also assess the condition of all those locker rooms so we can raise the quality of them for our students who, who use them on a daily basis. There's also the regular maintenance of, of lockers, which, which is, which is major. Social studies, when I talked with Tony about the social studies curriculum, he is just now getting underway with a committee. He's planning to go to the, it's a question of timing, really, on the social studies one. He's, he's going to be creating that committee. That committee is going to be busy at work. They're going to be looking at various different curricula that's in sync with Common Core standards, of course, and at some point in, in mid-2015, will be coming back to the board with a recommendation for social studies curriculum. So those are just, and then, of course, there's always the band in athletics, which is, we have a major budget committee that's looking at that. Obviously, I will be the first, you know, to say, I'm aware of some of the inequities. We're, we, I think we need to look at that very carefully. We also don't want to create a situation where we're creating a, a situation where some of our students can't participate because they don't have the funds. of our students can't participate because they don't have the funds. So there's lots of issues that we need to address there, and we did have, there's one effort to replace some equipment for Norwalk High School, and we also made a commitment to Brian McMahon, and that's actually one of the budget transfers tonight. So we know that that is a big issue and one that requires a little more study and for us to come back to you with a recommendation that's a little more thoughtful and gives us more time to be able to come back and say, here's a situation with our lockers, here's a situation with our curriculum, here's a situation with band and athletics. And technology, I think, will always be an annual capital cost as we replenish all technology. And remind you, we've already replaced, this year will be 4,500 Chromebooks, new laptops for every single one of our secondary school teachers, over 600 laptops. There is a major effort underway to bring our technology up to speed as well. So a long-winded introduction to the budget surplus that we're recommending here tonight, and I'm happy to, Rich, Rich can answer all your questions.
Okay. Any questions, concerns from board members? Ms. Mosby?
I have some questions on the capital renovations. The Levin Allen Road for 771,000, what is that for?
It's to renovate a building, the old road at Oak School, and make it into a pre-K center. So the CREC report recommended that we consolidate special ed pre-K into one site. That's been a recommendation for a number of years. We've looked at a number of locations. This is a city-owned building, but the building does need renovations to make it feasible to have A-classrooms and to really open up to code. And so, we had an architect, Silver Petracelli, do an assessment of the building, and they delivered a report based on the recommendations of upgrades that needed in the building to have it up to code and to have A-classrooms specifically designed for pre-K.
And on the special ed education in-house program, I guess later on, we will probably get more details as this progress and how we'll use you to get information on how the community will be involved with this process as well.
I'm happy to speak to that. The last year during the budget cycle, one of the concerns that we had was that we showed how the increasing cost for students who go out of district for placement has skyrocketed from a couple of years ago where it was 6 million to over 8 million now. And it's been steadily increasing. We've been placing more and more kids out of district. Meanwhile, while we're placing more and more kids out of district, Bridgeport, Merida, and all the other systems are creating in-house programs and saving millions of dollars, and we're going in the opposite direction. So we made it a priority. We said, what can we potentially provide here in Norwalk? So, for example, we looked at some of the different disabilities that students have, hearing impaired, you know, there are, we could be operating our own center for children who are hearing impaired and operate it within our existing school buildings, and why would we not consider that? We have, I think, a critical mass of children with autism, and we could do that as well. But what we don't have is kind of the, to be completely frank with you, we don't have the detailed plan. What we were going to do was tee that up to get ready for the budget cycle for 2015. And so, rather than just put numbers there that we're going to need six teachers, and we're going to need this, and we're going to need that, we said, let's carve out an amount because we know there are going to be startup costs. There are going to be startup costs associated with this. We can't say exactly what that's going to look like. Yes, it'll be staffing, yes, it'll be supplies, this will be a number of things. But what we want to do is very thoughtfully involve people in looking at the kinds of special needs programs. What are, what do our children, what are some of the disabilities that they have? What can we reasonably establish and create here? And then, what are going to be the startup costs? And if we're going to do something out of the chute, let's do it well. And so, that's the plan. There's going to be a planning cycle between now and, believe it or not, we only have about 90 days. It's hard to believe that in another 90 days, I'm going to be coming back to you with a recommended budget, but that's the timeframe that we have, and we're going to have to put that all together.
So this will be part of the recommended budget?
Yeah, that's right. Yes. And this provides us with an opportunity now, though, to get a jump on that because we know there are going to be startup costs. If we don't use this surplus money, then we would have to budget, we would have to ask for funds in the new 2015 cycle for that.
Additional funds on?
This actually helps us tremendously in preparation for our next year's budget.
I know you already addressed the lockers, and a question here on the lockers. Although it's addressed, 15,000 to 20,000 will be utilized, will that be in multiple schools or will you guys just pick one school and put that there, you know, to go in and repair?
Right now, it's looking at Norwalk High and Nathan Hill.
So it's just one school?
Two schools, Norwalk High and Nathan Hill right now.
Norwalk High and Nathan Hill.
Correct.
Okay. And I know that there was mention of SMART boards. Will you, or someone could at least let me know how many that we have in our school presently, because I know that's another item.
Do you have it now, or do you want to provide it for?
I'll provide it for you.
Okay.
Now, on the strategic planning, and I know I heard that you said the administrators, they were a part of it because of that session that you had. Are there any feedback or any type of documents or something that can show what direction, you know, they're going in that, you know, because I know you said that you took some input or from the meeting in order to develop your strategic plan, so I?
Yeah, that's the information that I reported to you tonight. That's the information I gave to you. That's the information that I have reported.
Okay. So, all right, so, all right, okay, so there's, so the administrators were part of it. They were, because the reason why I'm asking that is that because the administrators are the people on the front line, they're the one that's mostly in the schools all the time, and they know basically, and I believe at the finance meeting, and I did state too in the email that I want to make sure that the administrators had input as to this surplus that's here. And I'm just, you know, I was just asking to find out if they have actually put input, but since you said that that was during a meeting, so that's fine. And on here, technology and system investment, from the draft from the meeting, the finance meeting, it had a dollar figure of 130,000, but the final is 158,000. There's a difference of 28,000. Is that something additional added on to?
It's more support for Power School.
Power School, okay. And then, I noticed that overall, you said a lot of the, a lot of the savings came from vacant positions that weren't filled, and that's where we were able to get a lot of the savings. Now, because of that, now, the majority of the positions, because we just, because you said 58 teachers are coming on board, but the majority of the position are filled now. So what effect would that have going into the new budget cycle?
Throughout the year in 2013, 2014, we expected a sizable surplus. We had a number of teacher vacancies because we had high staff turnover. We had a vacant Chief of Human Resources, Chief Operating Officer. So a lot of these positions have been filled. A lot of it will depend on if there's turnover during the year. If somebody leaves us in December, we can accrue savings for half the year. So it really depends on the stability of how long our individual employees stay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Ms. Keys, then Ms. Rivas.
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Rivera and Rich for putting together the board member suggestions, because I think it's helpful to have that in black and white and be able to look at that and refer to that. Couple of questions and concerns that I have. I know, Dr. Rivera, you know, and both of you have actually mentioned as far as band and athletics. As far as band, our music program, I mean, I definitely think we need to allocate more than we have for both Norwalk High School and Brian McMahon. I know on an annual basis, we allocate about 22,000. During this past year, we've given $35,000 for equipment for Norwalk High School, and then you just mentioned tonight, we also are giving money to Brian McMahon for the same amount. I know for the whole program, the music program, which is marching band, winter guard, and all of the musical productions at both high schools, I know specifically for Norwalk High School, they cost about $400,000 annually to run that. Norwalk High School, as far as their fundraising, they have to fundraise about 85,000 per year, and the remainder, really, the hardship falls on the families, and it really is a lot of money for them to put out on a yearly basis. And I know all of us talk about going to these productions and saying that it's like going to a Broadway musical, which they are, but it costs money to do that. And again, it's just such a hardship for our families to have to produce that extra money to produce these shows and for marching band and winter guard. So I'm hoping by these suggestions, we can try to do something. And I know, Rich, specifically, you spoke about, or you haven't here, that you're going to be working on a budget committee?
Yes.
Do you know when that's going to take place and who will be on the committee and when that will be starting?
So we've set up a number of budget committees, one of them including extracurricular activities. So it'll probably start late September, early October, when the budget season really kicks off. So the expectation is to have the two athletic directors be a part of that, and then the two band directors be a part of that.
Because I think both music and athletics are key to our children's success, and I think we've got to keep these programs going, but we also have to find a way to fund and give them more money at both schools. Switching gears, as far as the lockers, is the main school, is it Norwalk High School, correct, and Nathan Hill?
And Nathan Hill.
Those the two schools that we're going to focus in on?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as, I wanted to ask Ralph, Chromebooks, how has that been working out as far as technology? What is the feedback? I haven't, I just want to know how that's been going so far.
The feedback I've gotten from the school so far is that it's actually one of the easiest technologies to have to use. You just open them up, the lock rating system, they elaborate out, and they can get started on what they need to do. So now, really, what we're focusing on this year is training teachers and students in using that web-based technology to, to basically implement 21st century learning skills.
Okay. Can we take a look back at that? I know I'm like in six months, three months, but just at some point, just to see how it's going as far as teachers being trained on it, the students, and how comfortable, like they're breaking down, I mean, if we're following through on it?
Yeah.
Chromebooks.
I'd be happy to do a presentation since we're in the final phase of this.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Rivas?
Yes. I wasn't part of the suggestions on the surplus. So, but I, when you mentioned about special education out of district, bringing, being able to bring some of our children in, are you focusing on both levels, elementary and secondary, or are you just going to focus on middle school, high school, whatever you start off with?
That's a good question. It hasn't been determined yet, but from the discussions, the preliminary discussions that I've had, it would be around elementary. The elementary students seem to pop up, but obviously, we haven't really gotten into that level of detail yet in terms of where or how we would set up a particular program. But the initial discussions have been around the elementary school level.
Okay, so you do have data on how many, the amount of students at each level, on elementary level, that are transferred out?
Yes.
And, okay, another thing also, just as a suggestion perhaps, I don't know if you've looked into the High Roads model that we have in Norwalk, because I think it's a good model that they have, and I know a lot of our children are transported there because we cannot provide the services. And maybe, as a suggestion, we could probably have another committee, form another committee with the schools that are providing service for our childrens and have input on them to see, to determine what is it that they are giving that we don't have and see what progress is and perhaps have a conversation, so then we can pinpoint exactly what we need in order to provide the service for the children in our special education. I was hoping that we could do something with this year as far as the surplus money goes, like you mentioned earlier, for hearing impaired or something like that. But there's a big, there's a big, a big amount, a large amount of students under the autism spectrum, and I think that that's, that would be a priority to me.
That's right.
And also, if we, you know, since it is a lot of children, maybe we can focus on the high school, middle school children, because since we're focusing on having them college and career-ready, I think the sooner that they get back to the district and we're able to provide professional development for the entire staff along the lines of co-taught classrooms and behavior specialists, I believe that we definitely need behavior specialists in the school district. And I attended, I attended a community outreach where we spoke about, with the shootings that they had at Ferguson and what they, and they did a presentation, and it was basically, we need to protect our children, and I think along the lines of, we could try to do something within our school district. I don't know quite exactly what that would be, but starting at an elementary level somehow, because I've always felt that embedding like social skills shouldn't only be for children with special needs, because if our children, other children that are not under any kind of special education, they need supports as well. But if you don't have an IP and you're not in special ed, then most likely you do not get these services. And I mean, I think that's a very important piece as far as behaviors go. So I think the behavior would be a priority with me on both ends, on the child's end and also on an adult level. And I don't really know exactly where to pinpoint, but since you're the superintendent, you would know that. And if you do have some type of those kind of committees or any suggestions that I have made, I would really like to partake in that and perhaps give some kind of input.
Sure. I think one, one good suggestion as a follow-up that we could take is that there be perhaps a review at the curriculum committee or at a particular committee as we get these committees, this particular group, up and running, looking at the various needs at different grade levels, understanding what's out there, what are services that are being provided by different centers where our students are attending, as well as, quite frankly, some of what are some areas that we think we might be able to do better. So I think it's going to be a combination of both, but I think I'd be happy to keep you informed as this process unfolds.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Well, mine is not a question, but certainly just wanted to say thank you for the process. This is exactly what we were looking for, I was looking for. We came from our finance committee meeting so that there would be other input, which did happen with not only the committee, those who were there, Mr. Millian, others that were at the meeting, but also the other board members who were not, were able to participate. And not only that, but also taking into consideration, Dr. Rivera, those suggestions, recommendations. That's just something that I need to see, and I just feel that's the direction, because therefore, we will then look at these, I see at another time, another situation as far as our upcoming operating budget. There are some other areas that we're going to have to take a look at. This is, it's not going to all happen here. The additional funds for athletics, that, hoping to look at that situation of pay-to-play, some way that we won't have to penalize our families, but look at it in a way that it will actually have equity in the system. But just overall, and this is one of the pieces that with the special ed, we've looked at that before. We've been there. I say that constantly. We've been there before in terms of having our students go out. We work hard to get them back, and then somehow, those numbers just seem to, you know, go out of hand again and again. So I'm not quite sure what makes that happen, but we have been there. So I am looking forward to seeing how we can get those back under control. But yes, the process and hope to see this mirrored as we move forward.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Barbas?
I just wanted to, I missed something. Manny, what you're talking about in terms of the safety improvements that are happening, you said closed-circuit- said closed circuit TVs, locks, and then there's one thing you started with, I just missed it.
Well, it, I purposely fizzled out. It has to do with...
I know, we don't want to show our cards, but...
It has to do with protective film on our, on our glass entryways.
Right. Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
It's, I think it's time for me to get on the soapbox here. You know, I have to say that I'm truly impressed with this entire process. In years past, it would have been tempting for any department, including the Board of Education, kind of look at the end-of-the-year budget and say, wow, let's figure out how we can spend this. But you all really rose to the level of transparency and inclusiveness and said, look, there's a surplus here, and we know that by state law, we can carry over 1%, which equals 1.64 million. So that's really a given. But here are the things we want to do with it. And we know that eventually, the things you're asking for are going to have to be funded some way, somehow. So I look at this as a home run. And you've put down the budget, what you want to see, there's vision, there's planning. When I was the department head in the police department, I always felt that we could have done better at projecting our capital needs three, four, five years out, and those kinds of different things that are coming down the pike, so we can prepare for them. And I truly appreciate the fact that not only have you done that, but you've done it well, and you've done it responsibly, and I'm really, like I said, I'm very impressed. I'll be the first to say to people, you know, Norwalk is about to go from a really, really, really good school system to a great, amazing school system. And it's because of the people sitting at this table, the people sitting out there, and the people in the schools, from the principal to the assistant principal, headmasters, down to the support staff that makes the school system so great. So, like I said, I was about to get on my, my soapbox, and I'm very proud of the school system. I'm very proud of all that you've done here tonight and what you're planning on doing. I know we're absolutely, I'm going to recommend to the Board of Estimate and Taxation that we support this request and that we work together to see what we can do with the other funds as well through special appropriations and whatnot. But thank you all, I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, another comment? Ms. Murray?
Yes, I was adding. Dr. Rivera, ends of monies that are actually given to the schools for them to, you know, prioritize however they feel, who will be monitoring that? Because that's something that, you know, when between our grants, what have you, just...
Yeah. I think, I think what, I'll sit with Tony, and what we'll do is create a sort of a simple process, so it doesn't have to be a cumbersome proposal. And what we're basically, a lot of these schools know what some of their immediate needs are, and they know what they want to do. And these are the kinds of things that they were sharing on that, on that Wednesday, the 20th, or 21st. And so I think they already have, I think, framed in their mind a good sense of what it is, and will make that allocation. The reason why this made sense, because every school has different needs, and so we, we want it to be equitable. We want it to create a process that was a little more equitable, would allow us to respond to their unique needs, rather than say, you know, we're going to take $50,000 and ratchet up read 180 or math 180. We'd rather let that school that has that need advance that. So it made sense in that regard, and we'll, we'll set up the process, we'll get word out to the schools now, if it's, this is approved tonight. And of course, I think it still has to go to the BET. So before, we'll tee it up so that when it is formally approved, we can, we can have something ready to go out to the schools, and we'll monitor that, we'll get the proposals in, and we'll, working with Rich, monitor the, the spending of that and how that occurs. And probably, I would imagine, just attach it as part of their site budgets as a one-time allocation, and they can spend from there.
So the checks and balances will actually come through, Rich?
Yes. So items like this, it actually sits on the city's balance sheet, and so when the expense is getting ready to hit, we request it drawn off the balance sheet and into the account, so they can't actually spend it on something other than what we requested.
Thank you.
Ms. Rivas?
Okay, one, another, last question, I want to have, the surplus, will, will if you're addressing, because my email was read to me, and there were concerns from board members, that it's never came out, that 85% of African-American males in 10th grade are reading below grade level, which was a few years ago. So will, will the reading grade levels on minority, minority children, will we, with this money, will be, will we be addressing this specifically?
Well, here's, here's what, what you're going to be addressing, specifically around student achievement. Last board meeting, I gave you a set of goals to hold me accountable. And those goals were very, I should say, quantifiable measures of student achievement. And they included increased performance in literacy and in math, and it went K-5, preparation of our, of our youngsters for middle school, preparation of our youngsters for 9th grade, and every, and nine, more and more 9th graders eligible for 10th grade. So we have a strategic plan, we have very specific goals, we have very specific assessments. The monitoring that we talked about at the last administrators' meeting on Wednesday, we talked very specifically about the fact that we're going to be out in schools, meeting with you, meeting with principals, meeting with you and your teams, to review student progress against these goals. We're going to do it at least two or three times this year. That was not done last year. I don't know if that was done the year before, but we're going to do it. And so those are the measures, those are the key measures of achievement. And, and tonight, I'm going to be distributing to you another packet regarding, regarding my form, my performance, which I would ask that you take up at the next board meeting. But it's all intended to keep this completely aligned with how you hold me accountable for holding, to, to close the achievement gap, to make sure we have more and more of our young people successful at key junctures and at key grade levels. We, in turn, I can take that and say, look, you guys got to be accountable. We work with our schools, they're accountable, they know what those measures are, and, and right in turn, right straight down through the system. So, so there are quantifiable measures around achievement and around closing the gap at key grade levels and increasing graduation rates as well.
Right. So then we will, we will be able to determine, at this point, once the plan is in place and, and it is working, and we see progress, we'll be able to determine what were the causes?
Well, my, my hope is that some of the major adjustments that we've made, this is, this is, it's not, sometimes when you're, when you're assessing what an actual cause is, it is sometimes difficult to pinpoint one specific factor. And so we have not yet hired a detailed research and accountability, or research and evaluation person yet, but the idea is that a lot of the initiatives that we've advanced are going to impact literacy. When, when I shared the curriculum, when I shared increasing time for kids in learning after school, when I shared having onsite full-time people, coaching teachers, working with staff, all of these, we believe, are going to impact the quality of teaching and learning that takes place in the schools. So to try to isolate student engagement, the kind of training we're doing around student engagement, one of the things that we shared with you was the fact that it has a high effect size, that to the extent that teachers create a growth mindset in a classroom, has a huge effect size on student achievement. So it's all of those culture pieces that are critically important, it's the ability of teachers to interconnect with kids, it's, it's making sure teachers know their subject matter and have the tools and have the resources. All that combined is what we believe, that's our theory of change, that's our theory of action. That's what we believe is going to generate increased student performance and close the gap for us.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Mosby?
Now, since we have sent your office, you're getting it to where you want it to be, maybe now we can start getting more information based on this, on the progress. I mean, because reading here, 85% of African-American males in 10th grade was a reading below grade level, and that was a date a few years ago, which, you know, I, I wasn't aware of those type of, you know, that type of data, so I'm just wondering, since we have staff, that if we can get updates on that, on, you know, on a certain type of basis. And you can show us where, you know, you are putting in to strive to close this stuff, but at least have us be aware that something like this is going on, because a lot of times we might want to, and I, I know you know your job, but sometimes, you know, input or brainstorming, or maybe we could do something in a curriculum meeting, or a different type of, you know, committee meeting to address some of the concerns, maybe might have to go out to the outside, to, you know, the outside public, maybe they might have some suggestions, or maybe we need more people to step up, or, you know, and it'll give us opportunity to reach out, to get feedback from the community, and that way, we can try to work on, on closing this gap, because, you know, that is very alarming in a sense, you know, where it's saying 85% of African-American males in 10th grade are reading below grade level. I knew that there was a problem, but I didn't know that it was to that extent for a few years, 85%.
I would love to see the source of that. I don't know what data you're referring to. I do know the data that we have, that I shared with you a year ago, and, and I know that we know, we know we can do better. We know we can do better, there's no question. But, but there's all kinds of data out there, and I, I think it's important for us to look at, what is the data that we are going to use, that we know with the assessments that we're administering here, that we can look at and have update about. I was actually pleasantly surprised a couple of weeks ago, when Bruce Morris shared the fact that through PBIS and the program that we have in place, oh, he did this with the administrators, we've actually significantly reduced the number of African-American males and Latino males who've been suspended in our, in our secondary schools. We're keeping more kids in school. Now, the question is making sure that we're giving them the best possible education that they can get. And so there are some good things that have been unfolding as a result of efforts that have been made, and I think, obviously, we actually have a district-wide standards and accountability committee, which replaced the old district. We're going to be going through with that committee, it's a, it's a group that consists of union leaders, teachers, parents, a number of, about 35 people on that committee, that's going to be our starting point. Obviously, as a board, we're happy to share with you that information, but that's the data that we're going to, that's the baseline data that I've given you, is the baseline data that I'm asked to be held accountable to, and, and we'll use the data that we have in our system.
Yes, you see, that, that, what you just shared with us about the suspension, that's the kind of information that I'm trying to say, it needs to be, you know, brought out to us so that we know what's going on, and we're aware of what's going on, because if we don't know, we're in the dark, and that's why we come up and ask all these questions, something like that, you know, since Mr. Morris did, you know, come through and tell you that, should have been shared, you know, I'm not saying, you know, it should have been shared with, with the board in general, and, you know, in general, so that we can see what's going on.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, he answered my question. My question was going to be whether your data was specific to Norwalk. That's what I'd like to see.
The data came from, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This was a, a, a letter, an email, it was sent to everyone on the board and CC'd Dr. Rivera, and it was commented by a board member that, that came with the data, saying 85% of African-American males in 10th grade are reading below grade level, and that's what should, we should have a focus on. So there was no follow-up, no one else commented on this email. So evidently, this was three years ago, so if there is something that's urgent, something that we should be focusing on, then it should, you know, it should come to the table, and we should be discussing that, because I wasn't aware of that. And when this email was read to me, I, I said, well, was there a reply from the superintendent or a reply from another board member about this email that was circulated to the entire board? So I, I was concerned, so I wanted to, to find out, is this, is this so? So I wanted to make sure. I don't, I don't, the email, it was on Friday, it was on Friday, August 29th, the email that was circulated. So everyone on this table is aware of this email. So that's why I wanted to break this down and find out, because if not, then we should put this on the information reports, go into the discussion, and see how we could pinpoint the problem and try to resolve it, and see what we can do as a board to fix this, this problem. So that's why I mentioned it, and I was, I wanted to ask, since we were talking about the surplus, I was unable to give my input, because I did not know that everyone was asked to give input for the surplus money, because I just didn't get that information. So that's why I wanted to say now, if, since I found out about this, this email, are we addressing this particular issue? Because if this, you know, that, that's why I mentioned it.
No, I'm glad you mentioned it. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if the percentage was specific to Norwalk or nationwide?
Well, I don't know, because no one...
Ah, then you have to forgive me, because I've been on...
You have it on, you have it on the...
You have a copy of this as well?
Right, right.
You got it on Friday the 29th.
I didn't get it, because I was not...
Oh, okay, so this is, I don't know if you want to read?
No, no, definitely, I'll take it.
Can I see it?
Sure.
I can't, I'm trying to find it on my phone, I can't...
Is this specific to Norwalk?
I don't know, I didn't, I don't recall seeing...
I'm the one who wrote the email. I'm the one who wrote the email, and the data is pretty easily available, it was in CMD data. I don't, I can look it up to see how it compared to the rest of Connecticut, but that was just, you know, standard reported, it was Norwalk, you know, in high school, and it was, it was, it was definitely three years ago, and then I think it had been at that number for some time, and then in the last set of CMD testing, it actually had jumped, I mean, it had lowered, if you will, and gotten better, but I think it was more like, I don't know, 70% or 60, I mean, it, there was, and I remember asking Diane Florida, what do you think? And, you know, it was kind of like, well, it was just one year, wasn't clear, was it part of a trend, was it just an anomaly, and now that we don't have CMTs anymore, we're never going to know. But I think, obviously, there are going to be metrics we're using, you know, Dr. Rivera's gone on record as saying, you know, we're going to close the achievement gap by 2020, there are various metrics, that was a metric that was used once, we're not doing CMTs anymore, so there'll be different metrics.
Okay. Anything else?
No. As long as you know who Mr. Rivera is.
Okay. All right. I, I'll just note that I, I think this is a terrific proposal that is, first off, good job on generating the surplus with careful management of our spending. Second, good job coming up with proposals that are using sort of one-time savings for one-time expenditures and not, you know, building base expenses into the budget by spending them on things that would be recurring expenses. I note that the capital renovations, the special education pre-case center, coming out of the crack report, glad to see that you guys are working on the crack report. We know that there was an initial crack report, nobody did anything with it, the second crack report came out, now there's finally action being taken in relation to that. I'm glad to see that we're hiring an architectural firm to lay out potential options for the existing Briggs site, as it relates to the Briggs turnaround plan for possible physical improvements to that facility. And I just like the fact that the, the overall planning is to fit these expenditures into the strategic plan, so we're not just using it as a smorgasbord to spend on nice things that we would like to have, we're focusing it on strategic matters. The 1.643 million, of course, will go to the Board of Estimate next week. That one only requires Board of Estimate approval, because it's the 1%, and if the BET approves that, then we're, we're then in a position to go forward with that part of the expenditures. The balance of it is going to require Board of Estimate and Common Council approval, and, you know, we'll, we'll put together the plans that we need to justify that to the people that have to make those spending decisions. But good work. I like the fact that, particularly the two days that you spent with the administrators, the reallocation of funding into projects that you're working on with them, I think is very positive also, so good job all around. Thank you.
One last question.
Ms. Rivas?
I'm sorry, one last question. On the administrators, were all nineteen schools involved, like all the principals of all nineteen schools involved in?
Yes.
The surplus?
All right.
Yep.
So, let us proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the motion, please indicate.
Give me a motion, second?
Yeah, the motion, second, was made at the beginning of the discussion.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. That's it?
No, I'm sorry.
Did your hand up? No, okay, six in favor, opposed, abstentions, three abstentions. Okay, six in favor, none opposed, three abstentions. Motion carries, and the budget is approved. Thank you very much, good work. All right, Rich, hold it up. June 2014 financial monthly report, Mr. Rudel.
As we talked earlier about the surplus, we ended the year with a favorable balance of 1.8%. We had an adjusted budget of 164.3. We spent 161.2, so we had approximately $2.9 million favorable variance. In addition to that, we started the year off with basically flat funding in the insurance trust fund. We had extinguished our deficit at the end of 1213. We now have a cash positive surplus in the insurance trust fund. One of the reasons why we were able to remove the operating margin out of the budget in 1415 is because the insurance trust fund is in positive territory.
Good. I'd like to hear that. Any questions, comments? All right, that'll do it. Thank you, Rich. All right, next is committee representative, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
We do have a question.
Yeah, I have a question for you, Rich. Since we're discussing budgets and numbers and all that, I have a question, and I guess I'm looking for, maybe I can get a report or something that can talk to the discrepancy that, of what you presented to us last week with the numbers, and then what we just received today, and what a couple of speakers said. I was a little concerned that, you know, you're saying one thing, and then we're hearing something different, so maybe you can get together and give us something that is, you know, that I can really look at and say that it is accurate or correct.
This is the final unaudited numbers. So, the numbers at the finance committee, in terms of the surplus, had budgeted numbers for the NECA teachers. The recommendations for the four NECA teachers have been made, and their slotted salaries have been allocated, so that adjusted the NECA allocation, and we had one final accrual of $21,000 that had been accrued back into the old year. The 161, 213 is the final numbers until the auditors file their annual audit report in December.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Rich. All right, next, committee representative reports, Ms. Murray, Finance?
I don't have anything other than our next scheduled meeting, due September 24th, which will remain that unless the staff has conflict.
Okay.
And I do, as I said, the idea of having participation from the entire board on this last carryover, and I see that coming and continuing that process, because we do have committees, but we do know everyone is considered on every committee, nor should you have to go come to every committee meeting to be, you know, your thoughts, your comments, recommendations. So, once again, the process that took place for the carryover, I'd like to continue that as you avoid.
Okay. Mr. Casemus, any reports?
Thank you. Athletics, the Yankees camp was a big success, that we had a week of August 18th over Bryan McMahon High School. There were 129 kids that came every single day. One of the days, Wednesday, they took them down to Yankee Stadium, and they all got Yankee uniforms. Three of our kids, I believe, trying to remember whether they were from, one was from Marvin Naramek, and there was one other student had scholarships that were given to them by the Yankees, so they were able to participate as well. So, that was great. Next year, they want to do two weeks with us. It was such a big hit. Also, I went over to Naramek and visited with, to see Mrs. Matarra and see the new wing. She gave me a nice little tour, the new wing, it's beautiful inside, kids love it, teachers love it. They did a really wonderful job over there.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's see, Mr. Barbas, negotiations.
I have a few things to talk about. Before I talk about negotiations, I'm also on the school facilities committee for the addition at Roway School, and there is a meeting tomorrow night, because it's a city-sponsored project, I mean, the city pays for the construction, the county council's land use and.
Building management.
Building management committee, thank you. They are actually going to have a tour there at 6 o'clock tomorrow, and they're going to host their committee meeting at Roway School tomorrow. I will not be there, because we are, we have four unions we are currently negotiating with. I know there was a pretty comprehensive review of everything at the last board meeting, since that last board meeting, with NASA, which is the union of the administrators. We are meeting tomorrow night at 6:30. That will be our first mediation. We will now be in mediation. Things are actually, we're making progress there, and we're optimistic that we'll come to a settlement, and that we will not need to go to arbitration, but we'll see what happens. So, anyways, that meeting is happening at the same time as the land use committee meeting at Roway School. On NFEP, really not much is, nothing's really changed since we were at the last board meeting, other than everything's kind of gotten pulled together. Rich and the NFEP president have been finalizing, ironing things out. We still, our goal is to have a meeting, a vote on that contract at the September 16th board meeting, but we're, times, you know, we've got to hustle if we're going to make that date. Food service union, meeting's delayed again. We were supposed to meet tomorrow, but now it looks like it's going to be early next week. Still, I'm waiting for confirmation. And then on the NFT, the gentleman who we heard from Bruce Mallon passed away, he was supposed to be our mediator. So, I just went and conferred briefly with Bruce outside, and apparently, we'll skip the mediation process because of this, and we will go straight into arbitration, is what it's looking like.
Okay. We should note, just for the, since we're talking about this, that the arbitration process for the NFT and NASA is a mandatory timeline from the state. It does not mean that we are battling with these unions.
Right.
We actually are very cooperatively talking to them and negotiating with them, but the, unlike other union contracts where the timelines can be waived by the participants, they can't be with teachers and administrators unions by state law. So, we are compelled to go into an arbitration process by the state, but that doesn't prevent us from negotiating an agreement, and then all you do is you put it in front of the arbitrators, and they stamp it, and you're done.
And that deadline is very set, and the arbitration was to start, both of these are on the same schedule, it was supposed to start today.
Today.
September 2nd. So, but we, there is a gentleman who's, at the state level, who's responsible for this, he's brand new, and that's why we got those letters kind of out of, those emails out of the blue, because the guy's, whatever, he's new at all this, but they've been, you know, we've done what we're supposed to do, we've notified them, and we're fine. Everything's moving along, and there is some, not much, but a little bit of latitude, and because we haven't started official arbitration today, the second, that's, you know, the state's aware of that, and we're not in any trouble.
Good. All right, thank you. Jack, anything?
No.
Okay, that'll do it for committee representative reports. Any board member announcements? Ms. Murray?
I don't have an announcement. I just want to ask a question on, for the finance committee meeting with Rich and Dr. Rivera, the actual agenda, is that something, are we moving into the operations budget period, or where are we?
October.
October, so we should be having?
One is ever.
Okay. Just to say to the committee members that, any recommendations of anything for the agenda items, please, get it to Rich for our, prior to our September 24th meeting? It would be any board member, really, but I was just guessing that.
Okay.
Dr. Rivera is at?
Sure, no, that makes sense, because.
All right, start, let's have that conversation.
Okay. Ms. Mosby?
I brought this up before, and I'm going to bring it up again, about public comments. You know, maybe we can get together and find out some way of responding back to this. Couple of weeks ago, we had people come and speak at the mic. Tonight, we had a few people speak at the mic, and I'm just trying to find a way of how we can be open to the community, because when they come to the mic, to at least get some kind of response back to what they're bringing here. And I, we keep having people come more and more, and we're not responding, and I'm just, you know, just something in general, maybe at another meeting or whatever, say, okay, we heard you, five people, you know, was talking about this, and, you know, just at least acknowledge, you know, that people are there. So, and this was brought up before, and I'm bringing it up again, because we have to work together as a community, as well as the board and parents and all that, in order for this school system to really succeed. And if we, you know, keep the community out, then we're doing a disservice to not only ourselves as board members, but to students in our school. So, maybe we can brainstorm distance one of our committee meetings, I'm not sure which one it will fall into, and try to come up with something where we can address some of these things. I mean, we're not, I'm not saying that we're going to always agree, but we have to have that opportunity to at least address when people come to that mic.
Okay, thank you. Any other board announcements, comments? Ms. Harris?
I agree with you, and I'm wondering if we can add that as an agenda item. So, just say whoever spoke tonight, if we can add that as an agenda item for next week, or response?
You mean have?
Can we add them to the agenda, like we have the Pledge of Allegiance, we have public comments, can we have response to public comments?
Well, we have a policy that allows board members to respond to comments or answer questions. We adopted that last year. I can send a copy of that policy around.
So, is that what you?
You know, I mean, it's voluntary, obviously. You know, the members of the board have the right at the end of the public comment section to respond, to answer questions, but it's not mandatory. I mean, you may not have anything to say, but it is, it is there in the policy. I will circulate that policy.
What I was asking, you know, not only asking, have the right to ask questions, but for instance, tonight, we've heard, and we've received a lot of information on something that was different than what we were told at our last meeting, so I was wondering if someone can sit there and reconcile that, because I would like to get accurate information, if I'm going to get it, and if I'm hearing something totally different than what was presented to us, it makes me a little weary about the information that we're getting. So, I just wanted to see, we have something in place that can go there, and it's almost like a fact finding, or, you know, you know, just trying to make sure that we're on the same level, because we are entrusting, getting, entrusting people to give us correct information so that we can make and inform an accurate decision on items that affect all of our children in the school system, and if we're not getting, I'm not saying that it's not correct, I'm not saying it is, I'm just hearing two different, two different things, and I have all this here now to go home and look at. So, you know, it's, you know, I just wanted to see if there's a follow-up, like Jerel said, that yes, it would be good to have it there, so we can go and say, yes, we looked into it, and da-da-da-da-da, and that's it, and then we can put it to rest, and put it to bed. But, right now, we have all this, you know, it's out in the open.
May I comment on that?
Yes.
This was on a policy committee, when we changed the policy, because in the past, you, we did listen to the public comments, and no one was supposed to respond. But I remember when we ran years ago, we didn't like that portion, because there was no communication back and forth. And so, we changed the policy specifically to say that after the three minutes were over for the person, any board member can respond or get additional information, but not to have a debate or a conversation that kept going on all night between the board members and the public, but to get the information that they needed, or respond if they wanted to.
Well, see, I wasn't aware of that.
I know, you weren't here when it took place.
Right.
But we did change that last year.
Well, see.
And it's available to all board members.
Yes, I wasn't aware of that.
I will, I will circulate that policy to everybody, so.
I don't want to make a point, but I guess I was thinking of something a little more formalized.
Yes.
To say that, I'm sorry, I forget her name, but the lady who mentioned.
Jackie Martin?
Jackie.
So, just say if there's something that requires a little more thought, something that we can't think of on the spot, something that we need research for, how do we respond to those things?
Well, I will tell you, on a number of occasions, when people have asked questions about individual matters here, I'll ask Manny to follow up on it, and get in touch with them, and get them the information that they asked for. As, you know, sometimes people get up and they just, they make a statement, they state their position on an issue, and that's fine, we listen to their statement of their issue. We're not obligated to debate them on it.
I'm not mentioning a debate, I'm not interested in a debate, we have way too much space here for my taste, I'm sorry, way too. What I'm thinking of is a formalized response, but if Manny's getting back to them, that's all I need to know.
Yeah, I think in my public comments, right off the bat, I said we should take it for the first two speakers who spoke. I want to set up some follow-up discussion, so we can clarify the differences of, for example, that the, what custodians are doing in Stanford, and the information that was shared tonight versus what we have, as well as with the questions around special ed. So, we will do that, and I kind of, I do take notes on certain things, and sometimes afterwards, we'll go back and we'll send information out, but I'm also happy to weigh in on what I know we can follow up with.
It was more for other peoples. I'm just more concerned about them getting response, but it sounds like we're giving them their responses. Not interested in debate, Mr. Lyons.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, Mr. Casemus mentioned, that's where my thoughts went. We're looking for substance, something that really does need the administration to get back, and clarify, bring more, you know, background to, so that's really where I'm thinking. More than just kind of off the cuff, I have seen where board members will wait until the board member announcements and something that was said in public comment, then they make their response back at that point in time. I've seen that, we've done that since this policy was put in place. Rather than getting into that debate piece.
Yeah.
That's the response, if it's addressed to, toward a certain board member.
Yeah.
That I've seen. But I think that it's more beneficial having the administration come back, and sometimes, Dr. Rivera can speak off the cuff, because he does know what's actually happened, so we don't have to go wait another board meeting to get back to that person on a period of time. He can say it, it's done, you know, and we can move on. But I think I'm really looking for, on the fact of what the administration has to bring to the conversation or the response, so.
I can remember specifically last year, a young lady was here that had a problem in school, and Tony went over to give the information, I think because of the board instructors telling him to do so. So, in that case, we did take information to follow up with her.
Right.
To help her out with her issues.
But we don't know, and I think that's where.
No.
We're coming back to, with feeling, we don't know that that's happening, that somebody's getting back to them, or there's a response. I'm not sure whether we need to be, you know, CC, Dr. Rivera, I'm not one to put another piece on your plate, okay? I'm not one for another report, I'm not, that's not my, you know, my goal. But if some thought can be given to, which makes sense for this, for you.
I mean, I think in just, if there are points that are made, that I have information that I can share, my desire would be to do it as part of my, initially, before I begin my superintendent's weekly report, and just briefly speak. Because in the past, in my early years as a superintendent, you get yourself caught, you can find yourself caught in a debate when you give a response, and then all of a sudden, then another question comes back, and then you're back, before you know it, you're into this exchange, and meanwhile, other people who've signed up to speak don't get a chance to speak. So, I tend to hold my comments, but if there are instances where I can make comments, if I have information, I'm happy to share that. Okay. Anything else? All right, if not, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes tonight. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the August 5, 2014 meeting. Ms. Murray moves, it's her second, Mr. Chiermonte. Any changes, corrections? If not, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate. All opposed, abstentions, three abstentions.
How was it?
You got who they are? Got them? Good, okay, minutes are approved. And the second set of minutes.
And the second set of minutes is the August 19, 2014. That's set. Mr. Chiermonti moves to approve. It's her second. Mr. Kassimus seconds. Any discussion, changes? Ms. Mosby?
On page 11 of 11 at the bottom.
Page 11.
Yeah, page 11 of 11.
Yeah, they, they say 9 of 9 out of 10. You gotta fix the punctuation there.
The approval of minutes, it has said everyone passed, but there was two abstention that was already in medallion.
Okay, for the approval of the August 5.
Right.
I thought we just approved. You mean two people voted against the tabling?
No, two, two people, no, 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 no. We tabled the minutes.
We tabled all the.
We tabled minutes, but then.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
And we abstained.
Right, you're abstaining. Right, because you weren't here. So it was two people, those two abstained.